Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd appreciate it if you have cell phones to either put them on silent or turn them off. Welcome to our county commissioners' regular session for Monday, February 3rd. Could we all stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Almighty and eternal God, you have blessed us with creation and made us fellow workers in bringing about your kingdom. So draw our hearts to you, so guide our minds, so fill our imaginations that we may have insight into your purposes for Craven County and wisdom and determination in providing for its future. End it in you. All this with the name of your holy name. Amen.
Madam clerk, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Booker.
Here.
Commissioner Lainer.
Here.
Commissioner McKay.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Sampson.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Here.
Chairman Mark.
Here.
Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of you. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we pull the Trillium presentation until 3 March at our next nighttime meeting and that the commissioners' report be tabled until our next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it. Thank you. Next is the petition of citizens. But before we do that, I would like to lay out the ground rules for that. Comment periods are not intended to compel board members or staff to answer questions in an impromptu or manner without adequate opportunity for preparation or consideration. Comment periods are also not platforms for debate between the speaker, board members, or the county staff. Each speaker must address the board as a whole, not any individual commissioner or staff from the lectern for debate. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks as measured by a timer operated by county staff. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers must be courteous in their language, their presentation, and must abide by generally accepted standards of decorum. Speakers shall not make the same or repetitive comments whether during a particular comment period or over the course of a multiple comment periods. Speakers shall not attack or insult any person or group of people, and speakers shall not give belligerent or hostile comments during any comment period. As chairman, I will enforce this policy during the course of any particular comment period. The chair may exercise his direction to effectively enforce this policy and by way of illustration, not limitation, warn speakers that his or her comments are out of order. In addition, there'll be no applauding, shouting, or cheering from the audience. Anyone who does not adhere to this, I will have removed by the sheriff's department. With that, call your first speaker, please.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, we have thirty-two citizens who desire to speak to the board tonight on the petitions. Before we go into calling those citizens, first disclaimer to you, I may call your name out incorrectly. I apologize. It's not to discredit you or in any kind of way, but I will also tonight be calling some addresses if I have a little trouble with your name. To keep things flowing this evening, I'd like to ask, when I call the first speaker, if that individual will come forward. I will then go ahead and call the second speaker, and if you will come forward and up here on the first bench here, just go ahead and sit down. And so when that first speaker ends, you can come right on and stand up. I'll call the next individual, and then they can come on. The way it looks this evening, we have over an hour and a half of comment, and so we want to proceed on in a timely manner if we can. All right, the first citizen to desire to speak to the board tonight is Ms. Raynor James. She will come. And secondly would be Mr. Howard James, both from 305 Calico Drive here in Union.
Thank you. Good evening. You have an opportunity tonight to choose to pass, discuss and pass one of two resolutions, both Second Amendment resolutions. The first one is a Second Amendment constitutional rights protection resolution. That is a strong resolution. It has some semblance of teeth in it. I hope you'll consider and pass that resolution. The second one is a very weak resolution, and it has a fatal flaw in it. It is called a resolution in support of rights afforded by the Second Amendment to the United States. Gentlemen and lady, the Constitution does not afford us our rights. Our rights come from Almighty God. This is not a good resolution, and I sincerely hope Craven County does not even consider it. We need a strong resolution. Our Second Amendment is under attack across our country. The stronger we look, the less likely we are to be a test case. Patrick Henry was a rather modern man. Communications have changed. Travel has changed. Human nature hasn't changed one bit. I can gladly echo his sentiments. I don't know what course others may take, but as for me, give me liberty or give me death. I am not going to surrender my firearms. I hope you will do the things that make it less likely for me to need to pull the trigger in anger. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Tripp, 1810 Butler Ford Road will also come forward. And Mr. Howell, will you speak now?
I'm Howell James, Olivia, 305 Calico Drive, and I'm a citizen of Craven County. I emphasize that word citizen, and I'll tell you why in a minute. I don't see this Second Amendment resolutions conflict as a Republican or Democrat thing. I don't see it as a black or a white thing. I see it as a citizens' thing. And all of you have sworn the oath of allegiance, probably several times. At least two of you have sworn to defend the Constitution against all enemies foreign and domestic, and to obey the lawful orders of all officers appointed over you. I know because I've made the same oath. In America, the U.S. Constitution is the law of the land. And what does the Constitution say about the right to keep and bear arms? It says they shall not be infringed. That's plain and simple. Now look at the very confusing language of the resolution this board proposes. Let me say right now, I'm not trying to be antagonistic. I am feeling very forceful about this, and it's a subject that I've studied a lot, and I might get over enthusiastic about it, but I don't mean any disrespect to this board. Sheriff Hughes is regarded as the highest law officer in the county. And why? In my introduction, I said I was a citizen. Sheriff Chip Hughes was elected by the citizens. And for that reason, he is considered the most powerful law enforcement officer in our county. Now, you all have also been elected by the citizens. I looked up the definition of a county commissioner, and what it says is a council that serves as the county legislative body. Voters elect a council that serves as a county legislative body. Like the sheriff, you're elected to represent us citizens. Now, the first Second Amendment petition that you all received came from a citizen. It hasn't been considered. We're here to tell you not to pass this weasely-worded, confusing resolution, and let me tell you why I think it's confusing. First, as Raynor already said, whoever said that the Second Amendment rights afford us our rights displays a total ignorance of the way our country was founded and of the founding fathers. This is an insult for the county to have a start off with the name of a resolution like that. And it says that we have a refuge. A refuge is a place that gives protection or shelter from danger, trouble, unhappiness. That's the concrete definition. I don't think our Second Amendment, our right to keep and bear arms to protect ourselves, our homes, our family, has anything to do with a refuge. That language needs to be taken out. Thank you.
Before you speak, sir, if you will, Rick Day, 204 Neuse Harbor Boulevard, if you will. Thank you. Mr. Tripp?
My name is David Brandon Tripp. I live at 1810 Butler Ford Road. I served as a volunteer firefighter in Cove City for five years and as an airborne combat medic for six, with fifteen months in Iraq. I swore an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution, and for this reason, it is my duty to stand here before you today. I am angry and frustrated that we are at this point, when we allow Republican or Democrat to infringe on the rights for an individual to have the means to defend themselves as they see fit. We will stop being a country of the free and will merely be beholden to the whims of a totalitarian state and federal government. Twelve anti-gun bills were pushed in our state alone this past year, under the guise of public safety, by people that were elected to be representatives and not overlords, to be faithful to we the people and not to a New York billionaire, people who swore an oath to the Constitution and Bill of Rights as a whole and not just the parts that they agree with. We have seen judges in other states ignore their oath and have allowed their states to pass obscure laws that violates the First, Second, Fourth, Fifth, and Ninth Amendments, laws that led to the theft of private property through confiscations where law-abiding citizens are turned into felons overnight due to the enforcement of these laws without due process, not because they committed a crime or harm upon others, but simply for the ownership of an inanimate object. Heaven forbid if a lawful citizen ever does need a gun for deterrence, protection, or sustenance, and are prevented based on a law that is unconstitutional. It is impossible for an officer to be everywhere, every time before bad things happen. In those cases, it is the citizen's duty to step up when they have the ability to protect others from violent evil. I am a peaceful person. I keep to myself. I follow the law the best I can. I help others whenever possible. But if anyone comes to take my personal property, harm my family, or unjustly oppresses my community through unjust laws, that is my tipping point. I will fight you even at the ballot box. I applaud the commissioners of the five hundred and one counties for standing up and passing similar resolutions nationwide, the four states nationwide who also pass protective laws, and I am hoping you will do the same for us and not cower because of some party line or lawyer bullshit. Thank you.
Next would be Kate Blakefield after Mr. Rick Day.
Excuse me one minute. Please watch your language.
Thank you all. Appreciate the opportunity. I just heard about this very recently, so I'm not totally prepared, but I have a lot of experience with firearms as a range officer, as a pistol, practical pistol competitor, and also with church security. I have a passion for this country, to support its Constitution, and the God-given rights, as was so eloquently stated earlier, to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. And guaranteeing that right is our Second Amendment. It was based in common law from England back in 1689, when William Blackstone described that as the citizens there had the responsibility and the opportunity to carry the weapons of the day, to protect themselves, their families, as well as resist oppression, and also serve their state to defend the state. We are in the same boat. James Madison echoed those same sentiments, and in his Federalist Papers, he wrote about that, that we are here as a state militia, supposedly, as fellow patriots, to support our Constitution and to resist a federal government that would be out of control. So I want to thank you and have you consider this resolution, and if we need to reword it to make it a little bit stronger, I'm all for that, but I want to stand and support you all and support my fellow patriots here to support our Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Larry Conley will come forward, and Ms. Blakefield. Also, I failed to do this, and I apologize. If you will, state your name when you come to the lecture, because it is being recorded, and it will help our clerk.
Okay. I'm Kate Blakefield. I am a gun owner, and I come from a family of hunters and gun owners. When I was a teenager, I frightened off a man that had broken into our house, had broken into our house with my father's shotgun. My dad was a veteran, and our family traveled all over the world with the Navy. When my dad retired, he went back to his roots and farmed in the Ouachita Mountains near Fort Smith, Arkansas, where he continued to hunt. In his last years, Dad and I had a few conversations about gun restrictions, and he said that as a law-abiding citizen and a responsible gun owner, he had no problem whatsoever with reasonable gun laws. Why should he, especially if it would save lives? He pointed out that other countries do not have the gun deaths we have. He used Switzerland as an example. Do you know that Switzerland has one of the highest rates of gun ownership in the world and one of the lowest rates of gun deaths? He believed that it was because Switzerland has very strict gun control laws and mandatory training in the use of guns. We gun owners have allowed ourselves to be manipulated and to believe in that common-sense laws would mean the death of the Second Amendment, excuse me. I have come to believe that that is nonsense. I have been told for years that the government is coming for my guns. It has not happened. Majority of people in this country believe that background checks, red flag laws, restriction on the size of magazines, and a prohibition of military-grade weapons is reasonable, and so do I. My Second Amendment rights are important, but my grandchildren's lives and your children's and grandchildren's lives are more important. After all, our entire Constitution exists to protect the freedoms we won in the Revolution, and our Declaration of Independence clearly states that we have certain inalienable rights, the first being life. Then comes liberty and pursuit of happiness. Thank you.
Ms. Seal Wasserman. Mr. Conley.
Mr. Chairman, Board, I'm Larry Conley, and I wasn't going to talk, but I changed my mind. I am a gun owner. I am a member of the Craven County Law Enforcement Range, and I practice on a regular basis. Guns are an inanimate object. I can lay a pistol right here, and unless I pick it up and pull the trigger, it could lay there for a year, ten years, and never hurt anybody. I think you're heading in the right direction. Thank you.
Ms. Hampton of 4077 Ruian Point. Thank you.
My name is Seal Wasserman. I live at 305 Augusta Court in the Greenbrier Community. I've read the original petition that was presented to you, and I've also read this other resolution, which to me doesn't even sound or seem to be a resolution. What I would like to tell you folks this evening is, on Saturday, the original position, petition, or resolution for the Second Amendment constitutional rights protection resolution was unanimously passed by the North Carolina Federation of Republican Women. It is being sent on to our legislature. It will go to the governor's office, the lieutenant governor's office. It will also be sent out to all of our regions, and we have five regions in North Carolina, so that they can pass it on to any counties that haven't gotten it, because there are several that have received this petition and have already voted on it in many cases, and those that haven't, we will proceed to present it. Thank you for your time.
If Cory Hunter of 501 Craven Street.
Hi. My name is Michaela Hampton. I'm here to speak to you as a mother. I have a daughter who's a Craven County school child, and I, like many parents, worry about our children in schools with school shootings. I worry about my child, and I worry about other children in our community. I'm also a gun owner. My husband's an avid hunter, and I'm not a bad shot myself, but I do feel that it is reasonable and makes common sense to just have a few little things in place to protect all of us, because we live in a society together. I feel like I'm certainly no constitutional lawyer, but as I understand it, there's quite a few rights that we are abridged because we live together, and we have to, I don't have the right to hurt you. I don't have the right to do that. I have freedom of speech, but I can't yell fire in a crowded theater, and I have freedom of religion, but I can't torture animals and children as part of my religion, because that's reasonable and sensible. And so I'm certainly not advocating for anybody to be taking anybody's guns away or anything like that, but I am asking you, as commissioners of this county, to consider the well-being and safety of all of your citizens and to make reasonable steps to help us. Thank you.
Ms. Helen Robinson, if you will, please.
My name is Cory Hunter, and I withdraw my comment. Thank you.
Ms. Valerie Truitt.
My name is Helen Robinson. It's good to see you all. I want you all to know that I believe in the Second Amendment, and I support the rights of citizens to bear arms if they choose. I hope people like Mr. Tripp can keep his weapon. However, I have a strong belief that citizens have responsibilities as well as rights. I'm a mental health professional, and so I come here tonight wearing that hat. Over my thirty-plus years as a mental health therapist, I have encountered situations where an individual was not able to use a gun safely. When a person is psychotic and out of touch with reality and believes he or she is under attack, that person is frequently not safe with a gun. When a person has a known history of significant homicidal or suicidal actions, that person isn't safe with a gun. When a person is active in addiction and has an addiction that shows itself with violent behavior, that person is not safe with a gun. Over the years, as I have encountered these situations, I've done my very best to work with the individual or the family to ensure that a person like this doesn't keep firearms. When such an individual or a family is not able to take reasonable steps to protect human life, a law can be valuable. In today's world, we call those laws red flag laws. All of Craven County was witness last week to a terrible tragedy in Vanceboro, where a man with an apparently well-known history of serious untreated mental illness shot and killed himself, shot and killed his wife and three kids, turned the gun on himself then. A red flag law, if we had one, could have made a difference last week in Vanceboro. All of us in Craven County want to live in safety. None of us want Sheriff Hughes to have to encounter a horrific scene like that again. So as we work to find our way through this debate about guns, I invite you to support our community by joining the work for a red flag law in North Carolina. I urge you to work towards finding a balance between rights and responsibilities. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Bill Hampton, if you will, come forward. Ms. Truitt, you can come on.
I'm Valeria Truitt, and I'm here to speak on a personal basis, not theoretical. By the way, I was interested that we had an earlier person who was also a PPC shooter. Perhaps he'd like to get together, and we can compare our trophies, because I, for many years, was also a competitive shooter at PPC. And if the government or anybody decides they want to come to my house to get my guns, they need to block off some time and bring a van. I am not opposed to the Second Amendment. What I am addressing here is the red flag laws, because the Second Amendment gives every citizen the right to own guns and carry them, but an individual can give up those rights by their actions. We all know that anyone who has been convicted of a felony has given up that right. And here's the personal part. My first husband became my ex-husband when he took a shot at me in our living room. Had there been red flag laws, that very well might not have happened. My second husband was a firearms instructor certified by the state of North Carolina, also by the Marine Corps. For a while, he was the second Marine Aircraft Wing Rifle and Pistol Team in COIC. Excuse me. And I'm not a bad shot myself, as someone said earlier, but I do not want to be in front of someone who's shooting at me ever again in my life. And if a family member were to get to the point that I felt they were incompetent to handle a gun, I would want a law in place that would take their guns away. When my first husband died a year ago, and my children went in and cleaned out his house, he still had the gun he tried to shoot me with, and he should not have had that gun forty years later, and I yield back my time.
Mr. Hampton, if you will, come forward. Mr. Glenn Think, if you will, come.
Greetings, Board. Good evening. My name is Bill Hampton. I'm a citizen in Craven County. I'm also husband and father. In addition to that, I own firearms. I own them legally. I believe in the Second Amendment, support our current gun laws, but I don't believe we need this Second Amendment refuge. We don't need that resolution here in Craven County. I do believe we need to be a refuge, for instance, for gun violence victims, for domestic and a refuge for domestic violence sufferers. I also believe we need additional funding for extended mental care, do support red flag laws, closing the background loopholes, high-capacity magazines, but I also support our Second Amendment. I believe it's good as it is, but we do need a refuge from some of the people that are misusing the Second Amendment. So I hope you take that in consideration and vote against it. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Bill Harper will come forward.
I'm Glenn Fink. I live at 646 Goose Creek Road. I support the resolution submitted by the citizen. A general concern with the commissioner's version, I'll call it, is a heavy bias towards quoting federal law and judgment. As was already said earlier, but I am going to repeat it here, God gave us the rights, including rights to bear arms. The Second Amendment was established to reinforce protection of that critical right. In the last whereas and the to-be-resolved statement, the phrase "and use firearms for a traditionally lawful purpose," I really don't understand what that means. No one would make a resolution that would support an unlawful use. I just don't think they would. So I don't see why that's needed. And I guess my question is, does a citizenry protecting ourselves from a tyrannical government meet the definition of a traditional lawful purpose? The phrase has no place in this resolution. Thank you.
Kevin Helmick of Old Vanceboro Road, if you will, please come forward. Mr. Harper.
Hello. Thank you for letting me have a chance to say something. Anytime I see something about taking our guns, taking my guns away from my house and taking my protection away from me, I get a little bit excited. I'm hoping that you don't do something or don't do something that will make me the criminal, because I'm going to protect myself, whether I'm legal or illegal. I'm going to protect myself. And I wanted you to understand that I don't like having to come down here and talk to the commissioners, because I've done it a few times before. And I've expressed myself a few times, and I just feel like I shouldn't have to. But when I do, I do come down. I appreciate you letting me air what I have on my mind. The second addition that you added on there is not what is good for America, and we all know that. Not good for the citizens. It's not good for anybody's protection. So I'll just step aside. Thank you.
Chadwick Howard, if you will come forward.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Helmick. I'm coming here this evening to voice my opinion on the Second Amendment proposal that I saw. And as I mentioned to some folks, I don't think it's strong enough. I'm a U.S. citizen. I'm a son of American Revolution. I'm a retired veteran who's fought in three wars to support and defend the Constitution, and this amendment is one of those. I'm a father, a business owner, an NRA member, a gun owner, a hunter, a firearm instructor, and a lot of what I see in this amendment doesn't cover enough ground. I appreciate what it says about you being willing to go and litigate for us and to lobby, but I got the NRA for that. I got a lot of fellow American citizens for that. What I'd like you to push forward is a statement that has a whole lot more teeth in it. Whether it's enforceable or not, whether it's a law or not, I want the people in Raleigh and Charlotte to know that this county is a county that stands by the Second Amendment and that we will support and defend it against all enemies, foreign and domestic, whether it's up the street in Raleigh or the other side of the country. There are a lot of folks in here that have brought up the mental health issue, and it is an important issue. It's an important issue to me, because most of what gets thrown around during that conversation deals with PTSD, and I've lost friends to that. But I don't believe the red flag law, the way it's been proposed in several states, including this one, is the way it ought to be handled. You don't come in and take away a veteran's or any citizen's rights or personal property to enforce a law like that. If you feel that that person is a threat to society, you treat them. And that means you treat them, you put them in protective custody, and give them the treatment that they need so they can go back to society. And I don't consider that as a penal code of any kind as a veteran. What I do have a problem with is my neighbor calling you and saying that Mr. Helmick might be a problem. So I get a visit from Mr. Chip's folks at three o'clock in the morning demanding the surrender of my firearms. That ain't going to go well. So I think that it's not that it's not important, but it needs to be handled in a different manner than the way some folks think. There are ways to protect folks. We don't take away cars from people that are on painkillers. We put a little note on the side of the bottle that gives them the responsibility as an American citizen to police their own activities. Thank you.
Mr. Guy Smear, if you will, please come forward.
Chadwick Howard. I'm a teacher in Craven, was a teacher in Craven County, now Carteret County. Forty-one years old. Thirty-nine of those years, I did not own a gun. My son asked me to get him a twenty-two, maybe a year and a half ago. The fact that I haven't owned a gun, I've never felt like others should not own that gun. In fact, my cousin served, I think, eight tours, four in Afghanistan, four in Iraq, and they offered him veterans' benefits, because each time you go, I guess you get PTSD, some kind of percentage for that. And he refused his veterans' benefits, because he said, "If I take that, they might take away my gun." When I bought that twenty-two, I'll tell you this, I spent ninety minutes, two hours, background checks. I don't know what else I signed. I signed my signature on many things, but it took almost two hours to get a gun. So I'll tell you, there are safety measures in place, and I think there's plenty of that for everybody. And that's all I have to say.
Ms. Catherine Stash, if you will come forward.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Guy Smith. I live at 2523 Hickory Street here in New Bern. I'm also a candidate for the North Carolina House of Representatives from District Three. I am here this evening to encourage you commissioners to adopt this important resolution on the Second Amendment. I agree with many of the other speakers that spoke of the right to defend oneself as given from the Almighty, but that right also comes from the law of this country and of this state. Obviously, the Second Amendment is the primary source. Article One, Section Thirty of the North Carolina Constitution also grants we, the people, that right. And the Supreme Court of the United States has reaffirmed that right two times, first in 2008 and second in 2010 in landmark cases. So commissioners, the resolution before you this evening is not only right and just, it is the law of this land and of this state. Now, there are some that would say that the adoption of this resolution is purely symbolic. I disagree with that. It is not just symbolic to tell Raleigh exactly where we stand as a county. It's also not symbolic for our brave law enforcement personnel here in Craven County, because they are on the tip of the spear. If this state, the General Assembly, were to consider and then pass some of the laws that Virginia is now considering, our law enforcement personnel would be put on what's called "the horns of a dilemma," as we used to say in the military. They'd be in an awkward position of either having to enforce unconstitutional laws or break the law of the state themselves. Our local law enforcement deserve more. They deserve our support, because they are the most vulnerable, in the situation I've described, to legal action by the state. I ask you commissioners to support them tonight by passing this resolution. Thank you.
Mr. Ray Griffin, if you will, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Stash. I live at 211 Easterly Drive in New Bern. I was going to say a number of things this evening. However, I've amended my speech a little bit. I just want to stress the importance of having a Second Amendment resolution. I was born and raised in Virginia. It breaks my heart to see the things that are going on there now and the fact that I can't do anything about it. North Carolina has been my home since 1996. This is my home. I love North Carolina, and I love New Bern. When I was in my early twenties, I was in college, and I was in a work-study program in Norfolk. I was in the work-study program. I went to a mall. It was the summertime. It was mid-afternoon. I was leaving the mall to go to the place where I was doing my work-study. Before I could get in the car and lock the doors, like I was always told when I was brought up, "Get in the car, lock the doors," I got in the car, and I went to lock the doors, and the window was just cracked because it was hot. And I heard a voice that said, "Open the door, or I'll blow your head off." And I looked, and all I could see was the barrel of a gun. And I looked in the opposite direction toward the passenger's door, and there was another gentleman standing there, and they both had masks on. It's July. And they had a brown paper bag in their hand, and I thought, "Oh, my God, they've just robbed a bank, and I'm like the victim here? I'm like a hostage here?" No, it wasn't that simple. But I can say that for several hours, I am amazed, it's only through the grace of God, that I survived, because they had weapons, and something tells me that they maybe didn't own them legally. God was with me and had His angels around me, because one of them wanted to kill me. I think they were surprised, because I never cried. I spoke to them. And I wonder sometimes, if I'd had a weapon with me, would things have been a little different? I'll never know. But the thing is, is that, this is a few years later, things aren't like they were then. They've changed a little bit. I want to keep my weapons. I have weapons. I have concealed carry. There's a reason for that, not just for what happened to me years ago, but also because of what's going on now. I don't want North Carolina to become another Virginia, and it can in the blink of an eye. Look what happened in Virginia in the blink of an eye. I am praying that you reconsider. The second one is okay, but we're not a refuge. A refuge by any other word is the word sanctuary. We're not a sanctuary. Thank you.
Mr. Doug Ferguson, if you will, please come.
God bless you, Ray Griffin, Vanceboro, North Carolina. I'm ashamed of the direction that America is going in today. We have become slaves to the government. This meeting should not even be addressed today. It is our God-given and American rights to own guns. If it were not for guns, we in America would not be independent today. We need and must stand and withstand. America is struggling. In Texas, there was a sheriff that had crime all over the county and could not handle it, did not have enough people, made the decree to get guns under the castle law, and crime dropped thirty-five percent in that county. We may need our guns in the future to fight against the socialists, the communists, the criminals, the radicals, and the left-wing Democrats who are trying to ensure that we lose our gun rights. God bless you, and God bless America, and may Trump win his battle in the fight. Amen.
Representative Keith Kidwell.
Lord, commissioners, thank you for having this meeting here tonight. I was raised in the military. My dad was first special forces. From the time I can remember, he raised me how to handle a weapon, how to safeguard it, how to aim it, how to shoot it, and how to be responsible for one. Everybody in this room is here because they're responsible gun owners, and there's a thousand times more in Craven County of the same responsibility. You're not going to have the ones misusing guns at these meetings. I'm a veteran. I've been in the fire department for forty years. I've seen more accidents because of DUI, opioids, and cell phones than I have of weapons abuse over that forty-year period. There have probably been three, maybe, in forty years that I remember a weapon was involved. This is a serious matter. We have the right to bear arms, God-given right, pursuit of happiness, liberty. I was watching the Richmond thing here gathering up there, and they had a reporter walk up to this young man who was bearing an arm around his neck. The reporter shoved a microphone into his face and said, "What gives you, what right do you think you have to own this weapon?" Well, the young man answered the best he can, but my answer to that reporter would have been, "The same right that you have to hold that microphone." Because if we lose the right to Second Amendment, and don't think it's not possible, it's possible. By all means, it's possible. We get the wrong government, the wrong representatives, it's possible. We lose the Second Amendment right, we lose all our rights. Can you believe it? I've been in Third World countries, I've lived in Third World countries, I was raised all over the world. It can happen. Thank you for having this meeting, and these people, a thousand like, thousand times, are the people that want you to pass a strong resolution, not something that doesn't mean nothing. Thank you for your time.
Representative Mike Speciale, if you will, please come forward.
Good evening, commissioners, and thank you for allowing us this evening and having us here to discuss the Second Amendment. First, I'd like to remind you that each of you have taken the same oath. By the way, I'm Representative Keith Kidwell from Chalkowinney. I do not live in Craven County, but I represent some great people in Craven and Beaufort County, and so I appreciate this opportunity. You took the same oath of office that I did, to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and of North Carolina. Your job, as you well know, is to defend that to whatever it takes. You are the front line of defense for all of these people that you represent. It is your responsibility to defend them from an overbearing government. That is what we're asking you to do today, with the strongest possible terms. Someone mentioned earlier that this is not representative. Well, we're not symbolic. In a way, it's symbolic, but I might suggest to you that it may be just as symbolic as Lexington and Concord were, because those gentlemen did not go out there to have a war, but by God, that's what we got. And while some people in government today may think they may not precipitate a war with some of the actions they're taking, I ask them to please look back at Lexington and Concord. When we look at what happened and what precipitated the American Revolution, we look to Lord Dunmore in Virginia, the same exact place that this battle is starting again. Lord Dunmore took away the weapons of the people of Virginia, and look what happened there. In fact, I suggested to the House of Delegates, when I stood exactly where Thomas Jefferson stood, when he addressed that great assembly, and I told them that we have heard rumors down here in North Carolina that Ralph Northam, their governor, may actually be a direct descendant of Lord Dunmore. We're not too sure about that, but it's possible. I would suggest that you put forth the most determined resolution that you can and show these people that you mean that oath that you took. Show them that you're going to defend them, and you will stand next to them in the event that somebody from Raleigh, which God knows will not be me, tries to infringe upon their Second Amendment rights. I assure you that I will stand with you. It's one of the reasons I went to Virginia. People ask me today, "We're surprised you're here, Representative Kidwell." I went all the way to Virginia to defend this Second Amendment right. I will go all the way across this nation, if that's what it takes, and I hope each and every one of you will join me, because I know the people behind me will. I assure you of that, the vast majority. Quickly about the red flag laws. We already have laws that deal with that. When you go to buy a firearm, in fact, Chip Hughes will give you some additional information on the gentleman that killed his family here tragically a few days ago. We already have those laws in effect. You cannot buy a gun if you are determined to be mentally deficient, but the Fifth Amendment protects you from someone taking your possessions in any manner without the due process of law. Red flag laws would circumvent the Fifth Amendment, which is just as bad as it's circumventing the Second. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate your time this evening.
Mr. Jim Corr, if you will, please come forward.
I'm Representative Mike Speciale. I live at 803 Stately Pines Road. I'm sixty-four years old. I'm 64 years old and I'm able to stand in front of you right now. I don't tell people this that often, but I'm able to stand in front of you right now and appeal to you to pass this resolution because a 35-year-old woman, my mother at the time, managed to get ahold of one of my drunken stepfather's guns and while he had the gun pointed at her, she managed to shoot first. So I'm here. I'm alive. Two of my brothers are alive because Mom was able to get one, grab one of his guns when he was in a drunken stupor and he was going to shoot all of us. I deserve the right to protect myself. Everybody in this room deserves the right to protect themselves. This is, we're getting off on a tangent on some of these conversations about red flag laws and this and that. There are 28,000 laws in place in this country and North Carolina has enough, plenty of laws to protect people and keep guns out of the hands of the wrong people. The problem is, is you are never going to get all of the guns from all of the criminals and any kind of gun restrictions, that's, those are for law-abiding citizens. The criminals are still going to get them. I know most of you. I know most of your hearts, I think. I said, "You're all good people. I appreciate what you're doing and I know that you're going to do the right thing because you've already supported this when you took the oath to support and defend the Constitution." All this is saying is that you're not going to allow unconstitutional laws or acts in Craven County. It's that simple. I passed the resolution in the General Assembly when I first got up there and it was a Second Amendment resolution and it was letting our Congress know that North Carolina supports the Second Amendment, they support the Constitution, and we passed it and we sent it to our congressman. This is essentially the same thing. It was a sense of the House, this is a sense of the county commission. All we want you to do is to tell us that you will support our right to keep and bear arms and do everything that you can as our elected officials because that's why we elected each one of you. Because as you know, and I know that you all know this, our first responsibility as elected officials is to protect the rights of the people. That's our first responsibility. I know you'll do the right thing. I implore you to do the right thing. Pass this. Thank you.
Marty from 2124 Royal Pines Drive will come forward. I apologize about your last name.
Jim Corr, 331 Miller Boulevard, Havelock, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have in front of me the Craven County Second Amendment Constitutional Rights Protection Resolution and this is the one that I had read and heard earlier today that there's a different one you have and you've already heard plenty about how much stronger this one is than the other one. But I just wanted to briefly say, you know, it's a shame we're even here, haven't discussed this because our Constitution was written not to restrict the rights of the people, but to restrict the government. And sometimes we that serve forget that we're not to be restricting the rights and freedoms of the people, but we're to be making sure the government stays out of their business. And I say "we" because I am an elected official in Havelock. But it happens a little bit at a time. Our liberties eroded a little bit at a time. "Oh, this looks good. Oh, this may help. Oh, this may..." But then we see constantly taken away and taken away and taken away the rights and freedoms of the people and limiting the people. So I really thank you for considering this and I want you to continue to stand strong to protect Craven County and continue to protect our Constitution and standing strong for the Second Amendment, all the amendments, all the Constitution, and remember that it restricts us that are in government, not the people. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Mr. Jerry Shiel, if you will, please come forward. And if you don't mind stating your last name, I apologize.
My name is Martha Zioba and I'm probably in the minority here, but thank you for hearing me, Commissioners and fellow residents. It seems cruel to me, as well as insensitive, to be discussing this, the rights that we have as gun owners, only a few days after that distraught man killed his wife, his two young sons, and an eight-month-old daughter, and then killed himself and the family dog. Could we have prevented this tragedy? There are ways we might have tried and you probably won't want to hear me say a red flag law again, but that's not a law aimed to take away somebody's guns. It's aimed to protect people who are, could be harmed by somebody whose mental difficulties make them unfit to own a weapon. It gives the family and friends a way to alert the court to what might be a tragedy in the making. And if the guns are removed from this person, it's not open-ended forever. The government is, the government can't even get its act together. They're sure not going to come and take away our guns. We live in a world with rules for our protection. To get a driver's license, you have to pass a written test and a driving test and you have to renew the license regularly and obey the traffic laws. In North Carolina, for a whole recent time, several years, we've had a whole lot of discussion about having photo ID in order to exercise our constitutional right to vote. Passions run high and many people are adamant that IDs should be required. This law only affects voting and voting doesn't kill anyone. Why would we object to having weapons licensed and some training required? Law enforcement and the military require weapon training. My husband is a three-tour Vietnam Infantry Combat Veteran. We've been married for 49 years and I only recently learned that the reason we don't own a gun is because he said, "It's too easy to go and get a gun and kill somebody when you've already done it." Licensing and background checks aren't going to fix it all. I don't believe we have all the right laws in place. What did you have to do to get in here tonight? You didn't get to bring your guns. Why is that? Rules. I oppose this resolution. We want the next young family to be able to live and grow up and it's too late for the family in Vanceboro. Thank you.
Ms. Linda Wan Siedler from 1981 Acorn Drive, if you will, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity. I for one am glad you're having this this evening. It's educational. It also helped Pam and I be married for almost 52 years because this is a date night for us. When you've been married that long, we're kind of easy to please, but two years ago, I took her to a very contentious Marine Fisheries Commission meeting on Valentine's Day and we were holding hands, so that made it okay. But, no, I seriously, I do think that this is a good exercise because there's a lot of young people that don't know what the Second Amendment is, what it's supposed to do. They don't know a lot of things. There's, might be some older folks in here that don't really know what the Second Amendment says or as Representative Kidwell mentioned, the Fifth Amendment. That's good stuff. But I, by the way, I'm Jerry Shiel with the, on 1406 Oxford Lane in New Bern, a resident of New Bern and chairman of the God and Country Christian Alliance. I didn't really read both resolutions because it wasn't, that's not what I was concerned about. I'm concerned about the process. If it's supposed to be a petition of citizens, it should be the citizen's petition that is considered here. And after consideration, if y'all want to amend it or change it or adopt a different one, so be it. But I think what should be considered primarily at this meeting is the petition that was submitted by the citizen and not changed afterwards. So I for one implore you to make it the strongest one, whichever that, whichever that one that is, because it is important. It is an important issue. And there's been some, some talk here about the family in Vanceboro. I went to four funerals recently. Every one of them involved a commercial fishing family. One was drowned when their trawler went down in the Pamlico Sound. Another one was up in Dare County in Wanchee. A young fisherman died of an overdose. Then there was a 41-year-old fulture man that died with ties to New Bern and Pamlico County. And then, of course, the Ireland family. And I know Jimbo Ireland very well, the dad of one of the victims and I just grieve for them. And when we went to that funeral, that was one of the hardest funerals I ever went to. But I can assure you, if you know all the facts, a red flag law would have done very little to nothing to help in that situation. Thank you for your time and keep these meetings so we can keep our marriage. Thank you.
Randall Siler. Will please.
I'm Linda Wan Siedler. I live at 1987 Acorn Drive. I'm telling you that I am against this resolution. The Second Amendment gives us our right to bear arms. I just don't think that we need it. I believe in our Constitution. I believe in the Second Amendment. I, I don't know. I don't think anyone here has had their guns taken away. Is anyone coming to get their guns? I don't think so. I mean, I'm a little old lady and I've been hearing this for years, but no one's ever said to me, "They took my guns away." I do think that maybe tighter background checks is good. I can't imagine anyone, anyone that's responsible would be upset about having tougher gun law I come from a family that were hunters. My father was 98 years old when he died and I think the last time he went deer hunting, he must have been about 95, 96. Couldn't climb up the deer stand, had to sit in the trunk with a gun out the window, humping it up. So I, I don't, people have guns and I understand that, but I just don't feel that we need a resolution. We have the Constitution. That has protected me for 70-plus years and I think it's protected everybody in this room. And it's, this seems to me like, I don't, I just don't understand it. And I don't know of any law that really takes your guns away. And I just feel that we do need some, some gun laws. For example, these assault weapons. I don't understand why anyone would want to have one in their home. They were meant to kill people. It was for the military. So why would somebody need an assault weapon for their home? I mean, if they're not, if they're not a good shot, if somebody's breaking in their house and they needed an assault weapon, you know, they may be a danger to themselves if they're that bad with a gun. Anyway, I do hope that you just realize that we do have the Constitution, the Second Amendment, and that this is not necessary. Thank you very much.
Juan Aravell from 1300 Hill Neck Road.
Good evening. I'm Randall Siler. I live in Trent Woods. I am a citizen of Craven County and I'll speak quickly because there's so much to talk about. As far as timing, it was mentioned earlier, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. made an excellent observation. He said, "It's always right time to do the right thing." With respect to question that was mentioned, I know, not meant to be a debate, but just the idea of assault firearms or whatever, the whole idea of the Second Amendment is against a tyrannical government. It's a fringe benefit that you get to protect your family from thugs. My intent this evening, I'm here in support of the original resolution, but as has been mentioned, with some significant modifications, the resolution that the county adopted could be acceptable, but just some of the paragraphs, like paragraph five, paragraph, paragraph five needs to be severely amended, paragraph six needs to be stricken completely, and there needs to be some teeth included at the end of it, perhaps by amending or addending the last three paragraphs of the citizen's proposed resolution. But I really want to take you on a little trip. We're all here in North Carolina and if you look at that flag behind you, it has two very important dates on it. North Carolina makes a claim for being first in freedom and that's not by accident. Of course, people are ignorant of how North Carolina got that in most cases. They don't even know why those dates are on the flag. Well before the Boston Tea Party in 1765, the Sons of Liberty gathered in Wilmington, North Carolina to protest the Stamp Act. They were so vigilant in their effort that they wouldn't allow the ship diligence to offload its stamped products in the harbor of Wilmington. In fact, the ship eventually had to go back to England with its goods. The Stamp Act was perceived to be a law from Parliament, but it was unconstitutional as it violated the charter that was given to those colonies in the United States and it actually violated the Englishman's Bill of Rights. Another recognition of the date, in April 12th, 1776, is the Halifax Resolves where North Carolina first affirmed the need to be independent and separate from British, from British rule before introduced by the Virginia Resolves in the Second Continental Congress. Folks, these things are enforceable. The Halifax Resolve was in fact a resolution, but if you don't believe it was enforceable, how did you get to be where you are today? We are citizens of the United States because those resolves actually had the teeth, they had the teeth of conviction of the citizens that stood behind them. We need to make sure we make the same stand and honor not only our history and recognize the North Carolina and the United States Constitution. I submit, I highly recommend that you amend your resolution or better yet, adopt and approve the resolution as submitted by citizens. Weapons licensing, you know, they don't do anything for you. You're right. Maybe you need to check history again in people that license firearms and citizens. Ask people in, ask people under Adolf Hitler, ask people under Castro, and if that's not good enough, go visit Chicago, California, Maryland, Massachusetts, any of those like white states.
Mr. Josh Corr, if you will, please come forward.
Hey, how you guys doing? My name is Warner Revolo. I'm actually from 1300 Hill Neck Road up in Ernole, okay? First and foremost, I'll tell you this from the get-go. Everybody south here has talked about licensing and everything else. I am not a U.S. citizen. I am a permanent resident that served in the U.S. Marine Corps for two and a half years. I have been vetted left and right to try to gain my concealed carry, drive by my rifles. They all are legally owned. The regulations are there. I have been vetted left and right. My wife, who is a citizen, who owns the property that I live on, has been vetted the same way I have. The regulations are there. Everything is in place. I know for a fact that the reason why we own weapons is, one, I'm a hunter, two, her family owns weapons and she likes to protect herself. We have called the Sheriff's Department at the very minimum five times and it takes them at the very minimum of six to seven minutes to get out to our property. We live in the outskirts of the county. We can understand the sheriff cannot be available to us immediately. We have to protect ourselves. Furthermore, my wife is currently carrying concealed carry only because we have a disabled daughter in a wheelchair. She has been approached by different folks at a Walmart, a Target, you can name it. And when she gets nice and funny, she just puts her hand in that, in that purse like I taught her how to do. I am pro making this a county where we are secure to own our weapons. I'm completely against the red flag law because I am a veteran. I've dealt with this. I have been vetted left and right to carry my weapons. Thank you for your time. Y'all have a good night.
Susan from 1230 Bryce's Creek Road, if you will, please come forward.
My name is Josh Corr. I'm newly elected Havelock City Commissioner. And when I swore the oath to become a Havelock City Commissioner, I swore to follow the laws laid out in the Constitution. The reason we swear that oath, you swore the same oath I did, slightly modified for the county, of course, but the point is, the reason why we swore that oath is so that if any time a tyrannical government comes down upon us, we are sworn to protect this, not a man, not a law, but this, a well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state. That's why the Second Amendment exists. It's not for self-defense. It's not for hunting. And for those that think that this can't happen, America, that the government... And for those that think that this can't happen, America, that the government can't come in and take your rights, it already has. And I say that specifically as to Athens, Tennessee, nineteen forty-six. Many people don't know this story, but the fact is, the sheriff of the time refused to be removed from office. The people coming back from World War II realized that the sheriff really wasn't doing things the right way. So they got together, got a guy to run for sheriff. Yet the sheriff stood outside and basically threatened people the entire time. In fact, it got so bad that he eventually took the ballot boxes to the jail against law and held them there, and basically said that he would be the one to certify the election. The men and women, mostly men of the time, of that county took their weapons that they had been granted by the United States Constitution and stormed that jail. The state of Nor, or the state of Tennessee was going to send in reinforcements. They were going to defend the sheriff as the duly-elected sheriff. But he was the tyrannical one. This isn't theory. This is in practice happening. And the problem is, if we don't defend it here, if we don't tell the state of North Carolina, "We are going to stand." The, the, the idea of federalism is that the federal government and the state government are to be equal, and this is the same thing as the state. The county and the state are to be opposed to each other. And the point is, if you guys stand strongly and you tell the state, "We will not move," and the state tries to come in here, it is your responsibility as elected officials to stop them. And it is your responsibility to defend our rights, to hold our weapons, and to stop them. Thank you.
Mr. William Lynch from Havelock, if you will, please come forward.
My name is Susan Jackson Cook, and I live at twelve-thirty Bryce's Creek Road. I am opposed to this amendment, a resolution. This does not mean I am not a patriot. It does not mean I don't love my country. I do support law enforcement, and I support the military. Certainly support Second Amendment rights and the Constitution. I also support sensible gun control laws and regulations, and I do not understand why, um, this, people would be opposed to any kind of sensible gun control laws. I believe this amendment is divisive. I believe it, believe it brings negative attention to Craven County. And, um, we do support the Constitution. You do that as elected officials, if you feel compelled to pass a resolution of this sort. I recommend that you keep Section One. The Craven County Board of Commissioners supports the Second Amendment rights of citizens to possess firearms and use firearms for traditional lawful purposes. That is all that's necessary to say. We support the Second Amendment. So I encourage you to not spend your time and energy passing this unnecessary resolution.
Tyke Adams from Spring Garden Road, if you will, please come.
William Lynch. Self-government is self-control. Holding yourself back from an immoral act makes it easier for you to stay within the law. When the citizens are armed, their government is one that they can live with. Liberty is preserved by an armed populace. This idea was expressed in the Federalist Papers and repeated by government officials many times since. Today, I read your agenda. I didn't notice anything wrong with that petition, but I would like to recommend, the first, the stronger, the citizens' petition, um, yes, do pass a strong petition in favor of the Second Amendment. Thank you.
Tyke Adams, thirteen eighty Spring Garden Road. I'm really not prepared for this, but, um, we're gonna go a little bit further than just a state here. Second Amendment is encroached on any more than it is. It's a slap in the face to our sheriff's department, our first responders, our military, who have taken an oath to protect it. Also, the men and women who have died in this country for these rights that we have. Also, Craven County needs this, to show Raleigh that we're not playing down here. It seems like a lot of times that the western counties of the state get more attention than we do. It's like a heel, and we're at the bottom of it. So I, I wish you guys would really, really support this thing, and let's pass it. Let's put some teeth in it, and let's stand up for our rights. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's all the citizens that have signed.
Commissioners and ladies and gentlemen, let's take a ten-minute break.
Agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of January twenty-first, tax releases and refunds, Township Nine Fire and Rescue Budget Amendment, and resolution recognizing Pastor John Watford. I'm gonna pull that and have it read, but I would like to have a motion on the consent agenda as is.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCain?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Moore?
Thank you. I voted yes. Could you pull that and read that? Thank you.
Resolution recognizing Pastor John Watford. Whereas John Watford was raised in North Carolina by his mother along with three sisters after his father was killed in the line of duty as a police officer in Columbia, South Carolina in nineteen fifty-seven. And whereas John Watford met the love of, love of his life, Bonnie, and married her on September eighteenth, nineteen seventy-seven, he and Bonnie had two beautiful daughters who God used to teach him about unconditional love and gentleness. And whereas he was assigned his first pastorate at the Church of God in New Orleans, Louisiana on July tenth, nineteen seventy-seven, and served there until nineteen ninety-seven. And whereas while in New Orleans, Pastor John completed his BA in theology, founded a private Christian school which grew to six hundred and fifty students, oversaw three major church-building projects, led his church on its first international crusade to the Philippines in nineteen eighty-six, conducted mass crusades in fifty-plus countries, and built orphanages in India. And whereas Pastor John Watford also was a restoration mentor for pastors, was a contributing writer for international Christian magazines and newspapers, had a radio ministry, piloted the discipleship program for international denomination, Timothy Program, and served as a hurricane flood disaster coordinator. And whereas from nineteen seventy-seven to two thousand and one, he helped plant and pastor a church in Dahlonega, Georgia, where he led crusades to South Africa and India. He completed his BS in education and his MA in education, and coordinated disaster relief for Hurricane Katrina. And whereas in two thousand and two, he moved to New Bern, North Carolina with the intent of retiring, but instead taught classes at the community college, faithfully attended his home church, Cornerstone Assembly, and assisted Pastor Jim Hogan, however he requested. And whereas in two thousand and six, John Watford was elected to serve as the lead pastor of Cornerstone Assembly, where he will continue to serve until February twenty-third, twenty twenty. And whereas while lead pastor at Cornerstone Assembly, he completed building projects, began a five-star after-school program, began summer camp programs, established a celebrate recovery program, served as the Presbyterian three times, oversaw twenty-plus churches, pastors, and many credentialed ministers, established a Cornerstone campus in Morehead City, and served as coach mentor to Jake and Jessa, Jessica Corkland. And whereas in addition, Pastor Watford assisted churches in first responder training and in development of security teams, served as the disaster relief coordinator for the North Carolina Assemblies of God, coordinated relief supplies through local and federal relief agencies, providing life-giving supplies for the communities in need, coordinated first responders, Christ in Action, in the aftermath of Hurricane Florence, coordinated with the Fuller Center for Disaster Rebuild, housing volunteers doing relief and repair in the community, and served on the Craven County Regional Disaster Recovery Board, helping coordinate the rebuilding of homes for those without financial means to do so. Now therefore, the Craven County Board of Commissioners acknowledges Pastor John Watford for his great love and service to God, his congregants, and his community, adopted this third day of February twenty twenty.
Thank you. Unfortunately, John Watford is not here tonight. I would have liked to have presented this award to him, but myself and another commissioner, Denny Booker, will bring it to him. Next on the agenda is Creekside Elementary. Before I get into Creekside Elementary, I just want to tell you, we will be taking up the Trillian presentation and take a vote on it tonight. Uh, Second Amendment, rather. Creekside Elementary, Pat Montane.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Matt Montane. I'm the Director of Public Works for the City of New Bern. Uh, and tonight, we are here requesting an easement along Old Airport Road for the Creekside, uh, Creekside Elementary School property. Um, Old Airport Road is currently in a redevelopment phase, where the city is making improvements to Old Airport Road from Taberna to the bridge located near County Line Road. Uh, that three-and-a-half-mile stretch of road is being improved in two different phases. The first phase is between Creekside Elementary and the bridge near County Line Road, where that road is going to be widened from twenty feet wide to thirty feet wide, which will include two lanes of traffic and bicycle lanes on each side. The second phase between Carolina Colors and Taberna will be widened from twenty feet to forty-four feet wide. That section of road will have three twelve-foot-wide travel lanes and bike lanes on each side. Uh, the re, the relocation of this project will include relocating the overhead power lines and the drainage ditches along the sides of the road, which is why we are here tonight requesting the easements in front of Creekside Elementary School. Uh, the first phase is currently under construction. We anticipate that that will be completed in the next forty-five days. And then the second phase between Taberna and Carolina Colors is scheduled to begin in the next thirty days. Uh, overall, this is a three-point-nine-million-dollar project, and the contract time for Phase Two is two-hundred-and-seventy days, which is nine months. So once we have this easement in place, we've got a few left to get, we'll initiate the contracts to begin, like I said, in the next thirty days, and hope it had to be, the goal is to have it completed before the Highway Seventy work takes place.
I'll certainly make that road safer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next will be the Trillian presentation. Okay, we, we crossed off them. This next is the Second Amendment resolution. Can I have the county clerk read that, please?
County of Craven, resolution of the Board of Commissioners for Craven County, North Carolina, in support of rights afforded by the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution. Whereas the Craven County Board of Commissioners supports the United States Bill of Rights reinforcing guarantees of individual rights and limitations of federal and state governments. And whereas the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution provides that a well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of people to keep and bear arms, shall not be infringed. And whereas similarly, Article One, Section Thirty of the Constitution of North Carolina provides in part that a well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms, shall not be infringed. And whereas in District of Columbia versus Heller, in two thousand and eight, the United States Supreme Court held that the Second Amendment protects an individual right to possess a firearm unconnected with service in a militia and to use that firearm for traditionally lawful purposes such as self-defense within the home. And in McDonald versus City of Chicago, two thousand and ten, the United States Supreme Court held that the right of an individual to keep and bear arms as protected by the Second Amendment applies to individual states. And whereas the Craven County Board of Commissioners is concerned about any effort by the North Carolina General Assembly or the United States Congress to enact legislation unconstitutionally infringing upon a citizen's individual right to possess a firearm and to use a firearm for traditional lawful purposes, as the United States Supreme Court has interpreted the Constitution. And whereas the Craven County Board of Commissioners supports the decisions of the United States Supreme Court that interpret the Second Amendment as giving individuals the right to bear arms and use firearms for traditionally lawful purposes. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for Craven County, North Carolina, that Section One, the Craven County Board of Commissioners supports the Second Amendment right of citizens to possess firearms and to use firearms for traditionally lawful purposes. Section Two, in support of the citizens, citizenry's Second Amendment rights, the Craven County Board of Commissioners will take all necessary steps within its power to ensure that legislative bodies do not enact legislation unconstitutionally infringing the Second Amendment right of citizens to bear arms and use firearms for traditionally lawful purposes. Such action including, but not limited to lobbying of legislative delegations and intervention and litigation challenging such legislation. Section Three, as further indicated, of support for rights afforded citizens by the Second Amendment, the Craven County Board of Commissioners declares Craven County to be a Second Amendment refuge.
Thank you. I'd like to call now on the sheriff to come up and make his comments.
Thank you, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and all of y'all for being here this evening. I think it says a lot that so many people have showed up to, uh, exercise your right and let, uh, our elected officials know your thoughts and what y'all would like to see happen in this county. So thank you. Like many of you or all of you on the board, I too took an oath of office, not only when I served in the military, uh, but as your elected sheriff, citizens. This is I, Chip Hughes, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as sheriff of Craven County, so help me God. I, Chip Hughes, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God. And y'all took an oath as well, and I know y'all took it, and you honor that and are, uh, know that that is sacred, and we're all very fortunate that we were able to take As the constitutionally and duly-elected sheriff of this county, um, I will never use county resources or resources that are afforded to my office to illegally or unlawfully seize or take away weapons that are in lawful possession and were lawfully obtained by law-abiding citizens of this county. That will not happen, not why I'm the elected sheriff. I appreciate everything y'all are doing. I was gonna keep this short, and that is my obligation. That is the oath I took, uh, to support and defend the Constitution. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you Chairman.
Commissioners, you've heard the Second Amendment Resolution read. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Let's do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Part matters, tax report, unpaid taxes, and Director Antrim.
Good evening.
Okay. Director Antrim?
Thank you Chairman Moore. Each year at this time, I'm required by law to report to the board the amount of uncollected 2019 taxes that remain unpaid that are a lien on real property. And for this year, that figure is $2,117,273.41. That amount is an increase from last year by about $500,000. So we are currently at a collection percentage of 94.75%, and last year that amount was So we're about a little over 1% lower than last year, and I attribute the increase in the amount of unpaid taxes to the fact that we have not yet, as we do usually do in mid-January, mail the delinquent tax notices. Because of some software changes that we've gone through, we have not yet mailed those, but we plan to do that within the week. So it's my anticipation that the collection percentage will narrow, and at least by the end of June 30th, and probably by the end of February, will be at par with where we've been in past years. But I give you that report, and I also ask that the board authorize me to advertise the tax liens in the newspaper as we do each year, and the date for that proposed publication is April 13th of this year.
No move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Emergency Services, Stanley Kite.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, and I would just like to remind you that as a part of our requirements under North Carolina law for the EMS system plan for emergency medical services, pre-hospital care, we have to have a county EMS system plan, and any time a provider changes how they function or provide care in Craven County, we have to, as staff to the EMS Advisory Council, bring the matter to the council once we've done our internal investigations and inquiries, and with the recommendation of the council, we present those findings to you. On behalf of the EMS Advisory Council tonight, I have two matters. One is the City of New Bern Fire Rescue has requested to advance from the medical responder level of care to the, to move up a level of care called EMT basic level of care. What that is, that allows them to do some additional medical care in the pre-hospital environment many times prior to the arrival of an ambulance being on scene, and that would also allow them to work in conjunction with the ambulance staff while on board the ambulance returning back to the hospital, and to be able to provide additional hands-on patient care with some things that basics can do that medical responders cannot. So this certainly would be an enhancement to the systems. I totally support that moving forward with you tonight, and if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and present Item B as well, which is also involving EMS, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. But the City of Havelock, as you know, is now presenting to offer emergency medical dispatch, the same services that we started a couple of years ago here in Craven County for our 911 center, where the 911 call taker is trained and credentialed to give pre-arrival instructions to the call takers, and to be able to do that 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They're just getting started, so they're following suit with us, but one of the steps in that process is for the EMS system plan, that we also incorporate that again as a part of patient care into the system plan. That too has been reviewed, has been discussed. We've been working with Havelock officials for several months now. The county manager was involved with a meeting that I was in with them to lay out the steps and the guidelines and the procedures. We've made that presentation to the EMS system plan folks, including the EMS Advisory Council, the medical director, hospital representatives, and the vote was in favor of allowing them as well to proceed to the emergency medical dispatch level of care, which again would only enhance our EMS system in Craven County by giving pre-arrival instructions. So I would like to ask that you support EMS Advisory Council on both of those matters to move forward with modifying our EMS system plan and getting approval from the state to allow these to function at that level.
Okay. Let's have a motion on the first one, please. A.
No move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
We will have a discussion, yes. You might do it now, or I thought you wanted to wait for the second one.
I mean, you called for a vote, so I mean...
I called for it on A.
I want discussion on A.
Okay. Let's have a discussion.
Yes, sir.
I see the mayor pro temp is out here from New Bern. Is it appropriate to talk with him?
To help your stand?
Forward, but I'll be happy to.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind coming up. I want, you know, this is completely new, and it's new for the City of New Bern. Is this something that the whole board is in agreement on and was proved on and can support it all the way through?
Mr. Commissioner?
Is this just a study that they're trying?
I appreciate the question, and as I was sitting in the back, I had just texted our city manager to ask him what this was about. So at this point, I would not be at liberty to say this was a staff decision, and from a governing board standpoint, I do not have an opinion because I don't know anything about the topic. As a governing board, I'd be in favor of you tabling this until we have an opportunity to discuss it with our staff, what this topic is.
Yeah, and that's what I'm getting at, because I see some costs in here. I don't know who the cost is borne by. You or Stanley.
Great question.
And are coming from the hospital to maintain it, but I just want to make sure we're proving something that's not going to be an experimental in six months. You're coming back to, no, we can't handle it.
Great point. I agree with you.
Stanley, do you know where the cost is?
The cost would be minimal in addition to what they're currently doing as medical responders. They're already providing medical responder coverage throughout the area in which New Bern Fire responds on EMS calls. Some of the items that would be involved at a higher level of care, they've already got their personnel trained to that level of care, it's just a matter of allowing them to legally function at that level of care at this point. Some of the additional items needed are worked through a process of exchange with supplies and equipment when the ambulance staff actually arrives on the scene. But I don't, I don't think you're going to see a significant amount of increase in their budget, but again, this is, this is a request to allow them to function. They're already functioning in the system, it's just allowing them to provide basic instead of just medical responder.
Okay. Let me ask the manager a question then. Is this, is this something that this board should approve without a municipality board even being made aware of it and concurring with it?
I hate to, I mean, the City of New Bern certainly has their own processes and things. I think from what Mr. Kite and I have talked about, this is, I hate using the word minor, Stanley, because it's an important change, but it's not something where they're going to be transporting patients. They're not beginning an EMS ambulance service. This is more of a first responder program where they're treating with a higher level of care on the scene while the ambulance from Carolina East comes forward. I think certainly I heard from the Alderman Odom, I would respect his wishes if they want to talk about it, but at this point, we've only heard from staff. Is that correct Stanley?
That's correct. In fact, staff's the ones that presented the application.
And Stanley, just to be clear, they presented it to the EMS Advisory Board?
They went through the hurdles with the application process. They went through the medical director to make sure they had the support. They're already in the system. This is, this again, is just a modification so they can provide a little bit better care and additional care than what they're doing as medical responders. That then went to the EMS Advisory Council, and the EMS Advisory Council reviewed their request, and they're making a recommendation to you. It's simply saying they will be able to do a couple of medications, not any kind of narcotic drugs or anything like that, but they'll be able to push a little extra care out there to the patient pre-arrival of that ambulance that they can't do today as medical responders. Trying to enhance the system that's already in place is what it is.
Stanley, I can fully understand where you're coming from, but I think it puts me and this board in an awkward situation.
I'm not saying not to, I'm just saying that the process is...
That another municipality board is not even aware of. I mean, if they, if you have no objections, or if this is not critical, that we table this until the next meeting, until we can get something from the City of New Bern...
No, sir. This is just a process of amending our EMS system plan. It's simply going to delay them getting into, being able to advance to that level of care.
Because if it's coming before this elected body, then their elected body should be aware that it came forward and looking at it.
Right. I mean, Commissioner Liner, I think, I think the standpoint is when it was presented to the EMS council, advisory council, and to staff, that, I mean, we have no idea whether they've approved it through their board or not, so coming forward, we assumed it had that approval if they took it to that level. So I agree with your point. If you want to table it, I think we can go back and work with their staff and, you know, see where we got.
Mr. Attorney, do we have a second on that?
I believe you did have a second, Mr. Chairman.
So we will have to change that motion.
Perhaps it'd be better for the motion to be withdrawn?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, then I'll withdraw my motion.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to table?
Motion to table. That's the first.
Quick, yeah.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it. Okay, Part B. Do I have a motion on Part B? City of Havelock.
Second.
Discussion.
Stanley, is this, is this going to be forever for this timeframe, that you're going to keep it from 3 o'clock until 6, or until 8 or 9 o'clock in the morning, or is this going to be until they get somebody in there that can manage that shit? Now, I understand during that timeframe, there's not that many calls and there are not many, but is, are you capable of what you've got now?
There's two governing, there's two governing agencies that regulate the rules of the North Carolina Office of Emergency Medical Services and 911. One is the North Carolina Office of Emergency Medical Services, which governs, all the regulations sit out in 153A, 250, which this falls under their purview to make sure that it is a service that's available 24/7 for them to maintain that credential. All the individuals have to be credentialed through the North Carolina Office of Emergency Medical Services as well as the agency. The other part is the North Carolina 911 Board is not a regulatory board, but the oversight of all 911 physicians is that by July of this year, 2020, 911 Public Safety Answering Points must be able to provide emergency medical dispatch. Again, we've met with them, they understand the requirements in order to fulfill that 24/7. I can only say to you, sir, they've been informed and they know what those rules are. If they're not in compliance, they can lose that credential as well as they gain it. Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion? Second? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it. Thank you. Let's see.
Okay, I would like to introduce to you Reverend John Robinson with Craven County Disaster Recovery Alliance, and I think he's going to introduce a guest to you as well for a presentation that they have on a request for the Craven County Disaster Recovery Alliance.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm pleased to be here before you. I want to introduce to you Kitty Hardison, who is probably known to many, if not all of you. She has just recently signed on with CCDRA as our Director of Recovery. So we'll have a professional staff person guiding our work and helping to support the recovery here in Craven County. I do appreciate very much the support of the board, the commission, in our work over the last year and a half, as we've gotten things put together, as we were reflecting the other day. All the pieces are now coming together so that we will have the capacity within the county to do our own recovery, should some of the groups that have come from outside the state decide that it was time for them to move on to another disaster. So we're very excited about that. I'm also the pastor at the News Forest Presbyterian Church over in James City, and we're getting ready as soon as we can get our certificate of occupancy from the building department to open a hosting center for volunteer groups coming from around the state and even outside the state to help in the rebuilding process. We're up against a deadline. FEMA is closing out its direct housing program in the middle of March, and we have several families here in the county who are going to have their mobile homes or their, their mobile RVs withdrawn from them without options of where else to go. The state has made available to us the opportunity to purchase through the county five campers, some of them are fairly generous sized campers, for the families that have nowhere else to go. Since we're not on the GSA list, on the Government Services list, we can't buy them directly. And the way the state has set up the program, they have to be purchased through the county, and we have grant funding to pay for the trailers, but they need to be purchased through the county, and we have an agreement, a sample agreement that you've been given in your packet to sort out the details of how this would work. The county has to retain ownership of them for two years, and then they, then there comes the question about what to do with them. We would like to be able to get them from the county at that point and use them in our continuing disaster recovery work. Or if families still hadn't sorted out their business, I mean, this, this recovery is going to go on for another three or four years, and if we haven't finished the work on their house, or they haven't figured out another solution, they would continue to stay in, in that trailer. So we're asking at this point to enter into this agreement with the county.
Okay. A motion?
No move.
Second.
Discussion.
Question. How many families did you say are going to lose their federal...
Their direct housing? It's possible. There, there are 52 families in the county that are receiving direct housing right now.
52?
52 families. Fifty-two families. Um, FEMA is working feverishly to help them find other housing because they are going, the, the time limit is up in the middle of March and they're going to have to, to send in people to take them back. We've acquired funding for five of these trailers. That's all we can, we can manage right now. Um, and we've already selected the trailers and FEMA is holding them pending the action of this board. But that's all we can pay for right now.
Okay. FEMA does, they're taking them back or they're going to sell them? But normally they sell those units.
Uh, they have already put in a lot in Kinston out at the Global Park, um, to, uh, a, a number of, of these campers and, uh, mobile homes. The ones that we've looked at are so clean and so, you know, it, it looks like maybe they haven't even been used, to tell you the truth. And, uh, those are the ones that we have picked out for the county to acquire and allow us to use with these families.
Uh, how many?
Five.
Five. Okay.
I know that seems like not many in comparison to the need, but, but we're hoping, we're, we're hoping that that gap can get shrunk.
We've identified about two families for sure. They're not going to have a place to go.
Yeah.
Now, you have two families right now.
Yes, we have two right now.
So, uh, the three empty ones, could we use them if we needed them?
I think there's a lot of practical uses for them. Uh, Mr. Kite and I have talked about it. I think it's an asset, as Mr. Robinson said, I think they've certainly got other families they'll continue to work with. I think that two number could probably be five, uh, as you work forward with their relief. So I think there's absolutely going to be a use for them. Um, other counties have been real successful with it. I think in your memo from Kitty that i- it commented Jones County and New Hanover County, maybe even Hyde County have been successful with this. Uh, certainly gives us a local asset, um, for these type of things where we're not having to use other resources, so.
And this is for a period of two years?
Well, we have to maintain the ownership for two years.
Yeah.
By the county being the lead, which we have to be, it's a two-year ownership, then the board can decide how to dispose of it or maintain it. That's your choice.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, John.
When the storm first came here over a year ago, I ro, I, I rode around with some of the FEMA people and we were trying to get trailers in New Bern, and right now they still got people in our area don't have anywhere to go. And then all of a sudden, yeah, I hear about, got some trailers now, and, and, and only one, one of our community is allowed to have some. But I think, yeah, renew me are the people who were supposed to get it out to the public, they did, did a mighty poor job. When you got some system that's not even able to have a place to go, not even looking toward, no one helping them to get anything. I less, I less appreciate the way, uh, FEMA had act, has acted during this last storm. People been out of their houses over a year. Storm here about, about 16 months ago. People still don't have anywhere to go.
I would agree with you, Commissioner Sampson, but I believe that's what they're talking about, is helping those people that don't have any place to go at this point.
What they're saying, they're saying this is just for those few people. I'm talking about people in the county, also people in New Bern don't have anywhere to go.
We have about 1,400 clients already. We are attempting to identify another, perhaps 1,500 to 2,000 families who will need our assistance. Um, e- even if it doesn't rise that high, it will take years to address all of those needs. We're very appreciative of all the support that we have received from the county and, and your good words to those who have been doing the funding. The state has substantially changed the funding pattern so that our long-term recovery organization, for instance, is, i- is receiving state funds, uh, to help us in helping people rebuild their homes. So that this is a, the most robust, I've been doing this work for 40 years, either as a volunteer or as a professional. This is the most robust, uh, uh, county recovery program I've ever had the privilege of being associated with.
Uh, Commissioner Sampson, they are doing this for Craven County.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I'm, I'm saying that so many of our citizens, we have these trailers left, which they are asking for, the ones that they have, and then it's other trail left, and from what I can understand, they're not being offered, offered to Craven County to-
The county could buy more. I don't mean to be insubordinate, but the county could buy more if they chose. We can only afford five, but there are more available.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it.
Can I speak now?
Yes.
Thank you.
I was trying to avoid you.
I know you were. I know you were. John, I want to thank you for what you're doing and for what you've done. I was on the board when we initially started it and you took over and everything else. We appreciate everything that that committee that you've run has done. But where I see this, manager, you know, I see the three, I think we can have the use of possibly, but I think it's going to be more useful to them if they go into a home and have to rehab it to get that family out while they're rehabbing it. It'd be a lot faster and a lot movement and everything else. That's going to be worked out with staff. I understand that, but I appreciate everything you've done. Ms. Kate, you've got big shoes to go there, and, uh, I think this whole board has been behind the organization to move forward, and it is a tough job. I mean, we're, we're not going to get there in the next five years.
I hope before then, sir.
It's going to be a miracle if it does.
I hope before then.
If it does. But again, thank you.
I anticipated you. Now we'll have the roll call.
I thought you already had the ayes.
No, we're in need of roll call both. There's money involved.
New Bern still have one.
Man, roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCain?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Moore?
Yes. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Department matters. Sheriff. School Resource Officers, SRO, Lieutenant Amendment.
Mr. Chairman, um, I'm, as the sheriff and his staff are walking forward, I was going to introduce the issue and he'll fill in the, um, the details. At your last meeting, we presented to you and Dr. Dole and Chairman Hale are here as well. If you'll just hold your hand up, they're hiding over there in the corner. Um, but the schools applied for grant funding from the state that was authorized in one of the many budgets they did, um, in their last session. They asked for 12 SROs. They were awarded three. Um, two of those positions would, uh, be offered to the county through the sheriff's office, and one of them would be offered to the city of Havelock, uh, for, excuse me, the city of Vanceboro for, um, Farm Life. In your package, there's two different documents. One is a breakdown of the cost of the personnel-related expenses. It seems low because it's only from the beginning of March to the end of the fiscal year, um, which is June 30. There's also another number which breaks down the equipment, which the sheriff will get in detail, uh, with his staff. But that's the vehicle, the uniforms, the gun, the taser, all the things that a deputy will need as an SRO. That is a large number because those are one-time calls. So to, to create a new position, you need those additional resources. Um, looking at next budget year, if, uh, obviously this is a two-year grant, when we, when we're developing the budget, the sheriff would need to add these two positions in his budget in his requests, uh, coming forward. Sheriff, I'm going to turn to you, um, for details.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so, uh, good news is, is the, the county was awarded three positions. Uh, as you all know, we need many more. Um, our schools are very vulnerable, especially the ones that don't have SROs. We do the best we can. We're getting our resources out to all these schools. Uh, but right now, I think the three schools, uh, that have been chosen, the county manager mentioned, uh, some of this is one-time as far as the equipment goes, the vehicle, weapons, uh, the uniform, radio, that sort of thing. Um, and then the others is salaries and stuff that is covered by the, the two-year, but after that two-year, we don't, we don't know where that, where we'll be. Uh, however, in two years, I know we will still need SROs at that school. That I do know. So I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Let's have a motion first.
Sub move.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Yes.
Manager, I think you may have left something out I think the whole board is aware of, but I think the community needs to be aware of it. In these figures, a hundred thousand dollars, this is coming back from the state.
Sir, I'm sorry. I should have referenced the amount of the grant. You're exactly right. Uh, Dr. Dole, correct, correct me, but I believe it's 49,500 per position. 50,000? No? All right.
Can I stand?
Yeah.
So the figures, go ahead.
Chairman, Vice Chair, uh, we receive 49, what, 49,000 is what we applied for. We have to match one-third at our level, so 34, I believe, is going to come from the state, 16 from us for each of those resource officers, and then we are, um, respectfully requesting support from the county for the remaining costs as were enumerated by the manager.
But still, 98,000 is coming back-
Right.
-to, to our coffers-
Yes, sir.
-that we're taking out of, that we're getting either from you or from the state for these grants. It's not all as bad as it looks as 141,000. 98,000 now that's coming from other sources.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I may have missed something. It says we have a grand award for three new SROs, but we're only talking about the sheriff's office will receive two of them.
Yeah, Vanceboro is going to take one.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you.
And then that'll leave us some other schools, which we will take up at a work session, uh, for the other schools that would have to be covered. Uh, I think we all feel that, uh, it's necessary to get an SRO officer in every school. Uh, it might mean a little money from the taxpayers, but I think that in the end, we don't want any of our children hurt. And, uh, this is something we'll take up at a work session on a later date in February.
Chairman, it's, it's unfortunate that's where society has taken us.
Yeah.
But, Mr. Chairman, I mean, since you brought that point up and everything else, and that's, that's what I was going to talk about on, on, on the next one as well. I wish the community would have stayed here and had as much fight for our kids and the threat that they are in to what we have just heard on the Second Amendment, which is important. Don't get me wrong, I'm not fighting that. But we don't, nowhere's near get the concern for our kids, where we've got 4,000 kids now in schools that has no SRO or no protection. And that's on us.
Right.
So we have to take a look at it and move forward. I think the sheriff's right. We're in that society. We're in that, that environment, so.
But those children are important. Okay.
Just wanted to, with these additions, then how many schools does that leave us without an SRO?
Six or nine.
Nine.
Yeah, I believe we'd have another-
Eight.
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 I just wanted to say that so the public could hear it, that we still have eight schools after this that are still without one, so.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Can I have a roll call both, please?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCain?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Moore?
Yes. Acquisition of supplies, federal equipment.
Sir. Chief West?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thanks for having me. I'm here on behalf of Sheriff Hughes and the sheriff's office to request approval to acquire a federally surplus mine-resistant ambush-resistant vehicle, an MRAP. This vehicle will allow the sheriff's office to conduct safety of life missions, conduct and continue our outstanding partnership with EM in event of natural disasters to provide rescue services, traverse high water, provide protection against high heat rescues, and also provide a secure platform for which to launch law enforcement-specific missions. With that in mind, over the last 12 months, we've had four instances of barricaded subjects. One progressed to the point in November that the gentleman was taking shots at our officers. The only thing our officers had to protect themselves, this sounds kind of bad, were the trees. They were in the woods in observation positions, surrounded the house so the suspect could not get away. They were having to hide behind trees, downed trees and tree stumps to provide protection. Currently, we don't have this protection. Like I said, the primary position, purpose of this vehicle is to provide protection for the citizens of Craven County, emergency personnel, and prevent the loss of life, which no dollar sign or amount can be put on. This opportunity has been granted through the Federal Logistics Agency, the DLA, the Defense Logistics Agency, through the Coordinator's Office in Raleigh, the Lesso Office, the Law Enforcement Support Services Office. This is on the state level. They contacted us after we had completed the paperwork sometime back and, and put in the paperwork that we were eligible for. We have not accepted it. We have not done anything except prepare that if approved, we can take possession of it. This vehicle normally costs around five, $700,000, depending on which variant you get. If we accept it, we'll receive this vehicle, no cost, initial cost of the vehicle. The cost that we'll bear is the cost of transporting the vehicle from a location, which is in Charleston, South Carolina, applying for agency logos such as decals, rescue stickers, those things. If batteries are weak, we'll replace those, and any additional equipment such as that, mission-oriented like a light, a blue light or a radio, which is absorbing for our normal budget, where we replace radios. Normal cost of these vehicles they're awarded, shipping usually costs between $6,000 to $8,000. These vehicles usually come out of Red River, Texas, or Sierra, California. But because it's in Charleston, South Carolina, at the depot there, we've able to secure transportation for around $1,400. Repainting the vehicle, which is a requirement, you have to rebrand the vehicle so it doesn't appear to be a military vehicle, so you're not militarizing the police, department or law enforcement, and terrorizing the public. So to do this normally costs $6,000 to $8,000 also, depending on what paint scheme or how in-depth you want to go painting. Replacing fluids, because these vehicles are usually taken out of service, the fluids are drained for preventive maintenance purposes, are around $1,000. These vehicles, like I said, come out of Texas or California. The vehicle that we have a chance to acquire, if approved, is coming out of Charleston, South Carolina, which reduces the transportation cost. The MRAPs have been dispersed out of Char, Charleston to date, have a varying degree on, I mean, miles on the odometer from 90 to 150 miles. These vehicles are brand new. In fact, the one they sent, I include, I think in the packet, a picture of one similar with, with markings on it. This vehicle was stationed on a ready ship, and when it was rotated back off, this vehicle is 2017, it's brand new, the fluids have not been drained, which saves us money there. The transportation costs are down, and we've received approval from the Lesso Office, the Law Enforcement Support Services Office in Raleigh, to place agency decals, marking it with our designation, rescue, or whatever we want to put on it, and that'll meet suffice the requirements of painting, which saves us another $6,000 on this vehicle. Like I said, the vehicles are still, has, still has fluid in it. It's been cranked regularly every month it's been sitting there. Let's see. The cost that we'll pretty much incur will be the transportation, radios, any outfitting of equipment. One good thing about this program is if any time this vehicle becomes unserviceable, if it becomes something that's other than what our mission, our mission creed is, and we have no use for it, we simply return it to a depot. We, we can take it to Camp Rejune like we have the LBSR, and they take it back in, we put a proper paperwork out and we're free of it, if that was the case. This vehicle will, will provide protection. It'll provide protection for our officers, because right now, we don't have, we don't have any protection for those people, our officers. A commercial vehicle, a Glencoe Bearcat, which is the equivalent on the civilian side, we've priced those out because we were going to try to acquisition one in a budget if possible for protection. $315,000 for that vehicle, as opposed to this vehicle, which is worth $600,000 or more. We can acquire for minimum cost, probably less than $6,000 when you add equipment, transportation and all. I've included some pictures, such as this one that's in your packet, and there are I've included some pictures, such as this one that's in your packet, and there are other agencies in the state that have these, just to mention a few, Goldsboro, Roanoke Rapids, Fayetteville, Goldsboro Police.
Carterett.
What, Carterett has one, they have a Max Pro, we recently looked at it. This vehicle's a newer model and is in much better shape. So with that, any questions?
Let's get a motion first. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I understand and I hear what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
But I would, I would put it back onto this board. We had a meeting last month that we tabled this discussion into a workshop in February, 17th of February, for another 10 items of equipment that's coming forward. This item wasn't even one of them, we just got word of this item on Friday. I would like this board to take a look at our rules of procedure that this board, this new board passed back in September of October, that states that we will not authorize funding that's not in an emergency. And any vehicles that come forward will come forward at the budget cycle. Now, I haven't heard anybody say this is an emergency. I haven't heard anybody say what we're going to do with this vehicle. We are the authority, whether we approve it or don't approve it, but we're in a reactionary mode, and we've been in a reactionary mode for the last five months on vehicles coming forward. Now, we've got $15,000 to $20,000 on the table the 17th of February, whether we accept or not accept. We've already approved $12,000 because of bills for local people that we felt we owed. Now, I'm sure this is going to pass, but we, as a board, need to start pulling our obligations of what we're expected to do and not reactionary. And that's all I'll say.
I would agree with you. However, I think this is a situation where we had to make a quick decision in order to get this vehicle. And the way I feel about it is, and I agree with you in what you're saying about the February meeting, work session, where they're going to come to us and we've got to talk about these other vehicles. However, I don't want it on my conscience that if we have a situation that they talked about and we lose an officer or two officers because we didn't get this vehicle. I agree with what you're saying, but I think in this situation, it's the same thing as having an SRO in a school. I believe that this is important to save a life, and therefore, I think, in my case, I think we could make an exception in this case.
If I may, if nobody else, go ahead. I spoke, you go ahead.
I was not aware that there had been four situations in the last year that I will say qualified as a shootout where officers needed
Yes, ma'am, barricaded subject, yes, ma'am.
Baric, excuse me, barricaded situations. And I would suggest to the sheriff's department that when something like that happens, that at the next board meeting, that the board and the public are made aware of those situations. I agree with both previous comments. We need to have these purchases planned as much as possible, but I think we're planning to catch up on them. I also believe, agree with Mr. Chair, with the Chair, that we don't want to lose it. And I don't want it on my conscience that we lose, lose an officer because of a $5,000 So yes, I will support this, but I will go back to what I said, that I think the board and the public needs to be aware when barricaded situations occur, that our law enforcement has not had the proper protective equipment environment, if you will, because that is what this vehicle is, that it's an environment that was needed. So, yes, sir, I can support it.
Just to inform Commissioner Mitchell, the sheriff and I had a talk about that, that he is going to inform us in the future of anything that occurs like this. So, I've already been taken care of. Thank you anyway for mentioning this. Commissioner Liner.
Thank you, sir. Both commissioners have made the statement that the sheriff's personnel, life is important, and I support it 100%, more than 100%. We need to give them what we can for that. I do that in that. But we've stood up here on this board, since I've been on this board for five years, and denied SROs, have denied SROs, and we're saying those kids are not important. Sheriff is doing an outstanding job on getting there visiting, but he'll be the first one to tell you, once that sheriff, once that deputy leaves there who's not assigned to that school, anything can happen. So, we've got a different situation. All I'm making sure that this board realize, we better start thinking about our kids, because we're putting, we're putting the deputies' lives who's out there. I understand that, but we cannot continue operating in a vacuum to where we don't know what's coming or what's going.
I agree with you again, and I agree with you on the SROs. I think that every school should have an SRO, and I think that we will be taking care of that, and that's why we're having a work session. And children are important, and I agree with you 100%, and I think we're going to take care of that. So, as far as this, again, we have the work session in February. If there's anything on that page that you don't like, we'll try and get it forward, you know, wherever we are.
I had my say, I'm one vote.
Okay. All right. I have a motion.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying, that you've got to be upfront, what you're going to do. But sometimes I realize you can't be upfront. Our kids, as well as our enforcement officers, very important. Times, since last year's time, they changed so fast, I bet things that turn over at least 50 times. Got, got, it's worse now walking the street than it, than it's ever been. And it's worse for the kids that don't have anybody else to go by in the street. So, we got a dual, got something like a dual project. We have to prepare to stop things from happening rather than wait till after they happen. We have a situation now that kids, kids three-years-old can get put out of school. When they get put out of school, where are they going in? They're going to some of their friends that's out of school. Then, then they think, you know, they're following a little gang. Now, we've got to take our resources and try to get the kids ready now. We've got adults, middle-aged out there also, but if we start from our kids and build up the support for the kids and have somewhere for them to go rather than go in jail and help fill that up. But this is saying that we need to talk together and listen, that we can prepare our kids that's coming up right now. If we want to have to be worried by them in the near future that much, spend that much money on them. But it's hard when you wait so long to have something done, and it's not done, but you need it right now.
Thank you, Commissioner.
But I'm so, I'm for doing everything we can for the kids, I say, the kids from the beginning, right from the beginning when they're born up to when they get adult. There could be taxpayers, citizens, they're going to help fix some of these deals. We look like we, we've been doing it back, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Commissioner Sampson. We have a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Liner.
No.
Commissioner McCain.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Moore.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appointments pending, current, and upcoming. Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, we have five vacancies. Nursing Home Advisory Committee, we have three vacancies. Senior Legislative Tar Heel, alternate, one vacancy. Board of Equalization and Review.
Mr. Chairman, I've been working on trying to find a citizen who would be willing to serve in this capacity, and this position does cover District Two, in which I have the honor of representing. The gentleman that has submitted an application is by the name of Rodney G. Russell from Dover. I received this application after the agenda was sent out, and I'd like to ask if the board would to consider him serving.
Okay, you have the
I do have the application.
Yeah, all right. I think we can approve that by acclamation.
Thank you.
Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, one student vacancy, one mental health position.
I'm working on that in Havelock, at Havelock High School. If any other high schools commissioners want to reach out, tell them, you know, it takes a high school student to fill that student vacancy position.
Okay, I'll help you out there. Recreation Advisory Committee, District Five.
Do you have somebody that hasn't managed to change their minds, so I'm still working on it.
All righty. Current appointments or upcoming appointments are the Craven Aiden Planning Board, Nursing Home Advisory Board, and Craven County Health Board. County Attorneys Report.
Mr. Chairman, I hate to disappoint, but no report this evening.
Well, that is a disappointment, I'm sure. County Managers Report.
Petition of Citizens.
Petition of Citizens. Petition of Citizens, general topics, comments directly pertaining to policies or issues which are under the statutory administrative authority of the board shall be made during a general comment period occurring at the end of each regular schedule meeting. Comments during this period shall be limited to those comments directly pertaining to issues which are under statutory administrative authority of the board. Do we have anybody?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have one citizen that desires to speak to the board this evening, Ms. Kelly Muse.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, or good night, rather. I'm Kelly Muse, and I have decided to run for school board for District Five. I am a former Craven County school employee, I was the program assistant for career technical education. I am currently holding that same position now in Onslow County. I've been looking over some of our data that you can pull directly from the DPI website. Our schools, grade level proficiency, proficiency due to hurricane-affected schools, and our poverty-level districts of similar size, we're serving our children worse than we ever have. And I do wish everyone would have stayed tonight because this is really important. Our children aren't getting what they need in our schools. Morale is bad. I've had numerous meetings with numerous teachers throughout the district over the past several months. Teachers feel, devalue their, teachers know our students better than anybody else, they're with them every day. It does not seem that they are being consulted when curriculum is purchased. I have some dollar amounts that will blow your mind. I have put in for several public information requests, and the dollar amounts keep going higher. It seems we're trying to buy solutions instead of creating them. I know many of you are aware of the vision and probably participated in it that was created for Craven County schools through Scotty Seewell, the company came, that came in from Raleigh. That vision cost us $68,000, and it's clear, based upon our scores, we went from 2D schools in the district to 6D schools in the district in four years, that we're not fulfilling that vision for our kids. I was a Craven County parent, my son, my oldest child is 21, my youngest child is 15. I know what I started with when I started my career in Craven County schools as a mom. I know where I'm at now. I would welcome conversation with any of you all. It does concern me that we don't have SROs in every school, we also don't have school nurses in every school either, and the idea of a school secretary administering medication to our students just didn't real soothe into me. It's important, there's a lot of things wrong, and I would welcome to have conversation with any one of you at any time regarding our children.
Thank you. County Managers Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I had three very quick things, because I know it's been a long night. I did want to report some activities I participated in since our last meeting. Last Thursday, I attended the Recovery Alliance Symposium at the Convention Center, talking about substance, substance use disorders. It was a very informative session. I want to thank Tyler Harris, who had a hand in bringing it here and helping this group come. There was over 100 folks there from all over east North Carolina. There was a lot of great information that was shared amongst participants, and I was pleased that our new opioid awareness coordinator, Jasmine Kennedy, was able to attend with me and stay the whole day. So, really great event, we're really pleased to host it in the Convention Center. Also last week, Chairman Mark attended the Highway 1764 Corridor Commission Meeting at Washington, informative meeting there. We will be hosting, just to let the board know, on April 29th at the Convention Center, we'll host their next meeting. So if you're in town and you'd like to attend, want to make you aware of that. And just as a side note, it happens so fast, it sneaks up on me every year, but this morning, we kicked off our budget process with the department heads, Dr. Doyle attended with us and heard the message. Certainly a process that takes many months and a lot of effort. We're excited about it, as difficult as that is to say, if you can get excited about a budget, but we're excited about talking about the things that the county's working on. We've got a lot of irons in the fire, as Gene likes to say, a lot of projects coming, coming down the pipe for us. Your work session on February 17th, I will tell you, is rather robust at the moment. Plan on staying with us most of the day. Right now, I don't have a feel for how the actual agenda will be, but the work session's over 10 items right now, and I think we just added one this morning. Some of them are lengthy debates, some of them are short, so, but just want to make you aware, we will have lunch that day and do plan on staying at least, my guess is 4:00 right now, but we'll keep you posted on that. Ms. Chairman, board, that's my comments.
Okay, and I would like to have a meeting with you on that agenda so we can go over it.
Sure.
Pick a date. Okay, we have no Commissioner reports.
Motion to go into closed session.
Motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.